Definitely ask your questions as we're going along because it's kind of a lengthy presentation here. As I mentioned, I am the executive officer for San Benito LAFCO. I started back in October. So 10 months now, and it's been a little bit of a learning curve. Before that, LAFCO had an issue with staffing because of illness, et cetera. So it's been a moment trying to get it back on track to where it's supposed to be and what it's supposed to be doing and how it's supposed to be operating. We have independent legal counsel. It used to be county counsel, but now we contract with Best Bestin Krieger and for with Joshua Nelson for legal counsel services. And Vanessa Delgado here at the county is the clerk. The commission is comprised of five commissioners, five regular commissioners, two of which are board of supervisors, two from the cities, and one from the public. And then there are three alternates, one in each one of those categories. You can see up there the terms. Majority of the terms indicate that they don't end until 27 or 28, but that's obviously dependent on the terms of the elected. So supervisors and city council members will likely change up before the end of their terms. So LAFCO is an independent regulatory authority of the state of California. We are not a part of the county. It was created by state legislation in 1963 to be a watchdog to manage the orderly growth and development of cities and districts. It's also known as the state steward of good government. The mission of all LAFCOs, there's one in each county, is to encourage orderly growth or boundaries, discourage urban sprawl, preserve agriculture and open space, and then promote efficient and sustainable public services. Obviously, special districts not being land use authorities, some of these items don't affect you, but the one that's most applicable is that promoting efficient and sustainable public services. So what does LAFCO do exactly? Well, in essence, it controls the boundaries of the cities and special districts and the existence of those special districts and cities. So you have to go through LAFCO to form a new city and special district to make any changes to city or district boundaries, annexations, consolidations, dissolutions, mergers, disincorporations. LAFCO also approves what's called a sphere of influence for cities and districts, and I'll speak a little bit about what that is in just a moment here. It approves the authorized services provided by districts and extends services outside of city and district boundaries if applicable. That meaning, so if you are, say, a county water district that's empowered to provide sewer service, but you're not yet providing it, you have to come to LAFCO to get that approved. We also conduct studies of municipal services of the service providers. So that would be any special district or city under LAFCO jurisdiction. We may make recommendations or governance options and alternatives or to initiate changes in boundaries and services based on those reviews. Went fast. So LAFCO was created post-World War II when there was a huge housing boom. And at that time, changes to city boundaries and the growth in the number of special districts to serve the housing boom was astronomical. But these changes all had to go through the state legislature. So in order to keep those decisions local and to reduce the workload on the state legislature, obviously, they created LAFCO, one in each county. And the Governor Pat Brown's Commission on Urban Problems focused on the need to encourage orderly boundaries as part of that creation of LAFCO. So as I mentioned, formed in 1963. There's no statewide agency. It's purely local control. There's no state appointees or funding. It all comes from local funding. There's a LAFCO in every county. Each LAFCO is independent. Once again, it's not under the umbrella of the county. It is an independent decision-making commission. And while those that sit on the commission are from the board of supervisors or the cities or the member of the public, they are required by law to take off their hats as decision-makers for those entities when making decisions for LAFCO. All of this offers local flexibility to adopt local policies that are appropriate, right? Every county is different. So there's been six major revisions to state law over the last 60-plus years to the Cortezi-Notts-Hertzberg Act. That is the act that governs LAFCOs. And it's only unique to California. No other state has these. Of course, gotta be different. Once again, I'll probably mention it another couple of times. We are independent, an independent state agency, not part of the county. Commissioners do make final decisions. There's no other body to which an applicant can appeal a decision made by LAFCO unless it's through a court of law, and that is it. So it's final say by LAFCO. LAFCO can adopt local policies that reflect unique circumstances, and LAFCO staff, me, is accountable to the commission and then that state statute that I mentioned, the Cortezi-Notts-Hertzberg Act, part of government code. We went over the composition of San Benito LAFCO. This generally is the case for many LAFCOs, but there is also the option, after you have your five members and one for each alternate for each category, you can also have two special district members and one alternate. So at present, it's an eight-member commission in total if you include the alternates. If you included special districts on the commission, then it would be an 11-member board. Or seven-member, regular members that are making those decisions. Those are the voting members. And as I mentioned, once they are sitting on the commission and making decisions for LAFCO, they do have to take off the hat of whatever entity that they are representing and make a decision based on the LAFCO law and LAFCO policies. So in California, the ones in yellow all have special district representation, all of those counties. There are actually a few more that have been added since this map was made. So it's probably more than half of the counties have special district representation on them that has been added over time. LAFCO is funded based on government code and the requirements in there. Of course, we must adopt a budget by June 15th, and then it's funded equally by dependent on the makeup of the commission. So right now, San Benito LAFCO is only the county and the cities. So each entity pays 50%. 50% to the county, 50% to the cities. Now, San Juan Batista obviously has a smaller budget than, say, Hollister. So their share is representative of their ratio compared to the total city revenues ratio. So I think Hollister pays, gosh, I want to say close to 85 to almost 90% of the portion, a portion to cities, and then San Juan Batista is the other 12% or so. If there are special districts on LAFCO, then it becomes a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 parseout. So 1/3 to the county, 1/3 to the cities, and then 1/3 to all special districts. The way that the special district allocation is determined is based on, similar to the cities, the ratio of the special districts' revenues to all special district revenues in the county. So I have a table. It'll be better to see it on the screen so you can get a representation of what that means. But special districts, the takeaway here, would be responsible for 1/3 of the LAFCO budget. The LAFCO budget did recently increase. As I mentioned, there were some staffing issues, but now that it is in place, it's fairly stable, and I don't anticipate changes, very minimal changes to the budget from year to year for the next several years, I'm guessing. Local funding formulas are allowed. San Benito LAFCO did propose a 1/5 allocation to the special districts. It did not pass. It has to be approved by the county and both city councils in order for that to be approved, and it was not approved. So right now, as it stands, special districts would be responsible for 1/3. Processing fees for applications help offset the expenses for proposals. So LAFCO has authority over, it says counties, is kind of the portion of the counties the dependent special districts are a part of, so like county service areas. Also jurisdiction over cities and most independent special districts. We do not have jurisdictional authority over JPAs, mutual water companies, CFDs or Melrose, school districts, county boundaries, bridge and highway districts, improvement districts, zones of benefit, air pollution quality districts. There are a couple of other small exceptions, but you get the idea. We talked about what exactly LAFCO could do already, so I won't list each one of these. I think we mentioned all of them. I talked about activating latent powers. I didn't mention divestiture of powers. So most recently, county service area 22, service for wastewater services is being taken over by Sunny Slope in the city. So because they're no longer providing wastewater services, they came to LAFCO and applied to divest themselves of wastewater services, and that was approved. That means that CSA 22 can no longer provide those services. So that process has to go through LAFCO. LAFCO does have somewhat of a planning function. It is not a land use authority that lies with the county and cities. But LAFCO can develop and update those spheres of influence for cities and districts. It can prepare municipal service reviews that I mentioned for all local jurisdictions, and it can work cooperatively on growth, preservation, and service delivery issues. So LAFCO as a regulator, it can administer modification of existing agencies and creation of new ones. It considers boundary changes. It controls extension of public services. It's prohibited from directly regulating land use. It's important. As a resource, it has a lot of resources available to the public in those districts that it has jurisdiction over. Models, studies, inter-agency agreement samples if necessary, models for tax sharing, training and educational resources, also historical, current, and trending info, particularly for formation and boundary changes. We have quite the substantial archives. So if you have any questions about your district's history, let me know, and I can look it up for you. And then those sphere of influence studies and municipal service reviews since the early 2000s, and these are pretty great tools for any agency in getting a snapshot of their particular agency, the services they provide, and any recommended improvements from a LAFCO perspective. LAFCO is subject to state laws, of course, including the typical Brown Act, SEQA, Revenue and Tax Code, the Political Reform Act, and all principal acts that govern the special districts. So I mentioned a sphere of influence. It is a plan for the probable physical boundaries and service area of a local agency as determined by the commission. So each one of the special districts and cities has its boundaries, its LAFCO-approved boundaries, and also a sphere of influence. That sphere of influence is an indicator of where LAFCO anticipates that agency will grow to or not grow to, depending on the type of sphere of influence. A sphere of influence could be the same as the boundaries of a district. That means LAFCO anticipates the district's not going to grow, it's not going to annex additional territory. I give this as an example. This is the city of Hollister's city limits in gray, and the red is its sphere of influence. That's where LAFCO previously approved the sphere of influence. Right now, they're in the midst of updating that sphere of influence, but it means LAFCO anticipates the city will grow out to those red lines. It also means that LAFCO will only accept applications for annexations for the territory within that sphere of influence. So if they want to add territory to the city, but it's outside the sphere of influence, first, the sphere of influence would have to be changed, and then an application could come to LAFCO for that annexation. So I know this is a city up here, but special districts are the same. You would have your boundaries and a sphere of influence similar to this. Spheres can also be smaller than the boundaries. That means that LAFCO anticipates the area would be detached from the entity. You can also have a zero sphere of influence. That means that LAFCO anticipates the dissolution of the special district. Now, those spheres of influence are informed by municipal service reviews, or MSRs. And the content for those MSRs is regulated by the government code. So if you look at government code, section 56, 425, requires that these MSRs be conducted and then outlines in detail the determinations or findings that LAFCO must come to. And that is them, all seven. So to go through them just quite quickly here, all of these things must be covered in the MSR, first being growth and population projections for the affected area, the location and characteristics of any disadvantaged, unincorporated communities within or contiguous to the agency's sphere of influence. The third one is quite a mouthful and is probably the most important of the determinations in my mind. It's the present and planned capacity of public facilities and adequacy of public services, including infrastructure needs or deficiencies, including needs or deficiencies related to sewers, municipal industrial water, and structural fire protection in any disadvantaged, unincorporated community within or contiguous to the sphere of influence. This one's important because if you are a service provider, and it's most applicable, I would say, to the special districts, if you're a service provider, LAFCO's not going to approve a large sphere of influence if you don't have the capacity to provide the services. If you are struggling, if your wastewater plant doesn't have capacity, if your sewer lines are constantly overflowing, if your level of services is insufficient for a service provider, if you have substantial infrastructure needs, it would be frankly irresponsible of LAFCO to approve a sphere of influence that would say, sure, you can serve more people. So in my mind, that's why that one's the most important and probably, like I said, most applicable to the special districts. Number four, financial ability of agencies to provide those services, the status of and opportunities for shared facilities, and then the accountability for community service needs. And that includes governmental structure and operational efficiencies. And for that one is another important one because we identify governmental structure options, and that's an essential part of any MSR. It's looking at, are there options for restructuring how the service is provided or how governance is offered that would improve efficiency of services? So you will find that as part of any good MSR, an outline of what any governmental structure options are available. And the last one is a catch-all, anything that's local policy that's been adopted by the commission that should be included. So here in San Benito, I should also mention, part of the law says that the spheres of influence should be updated every five years or as necessary. And the sphere of influence must be informed by a new municipal service review. So if you're looking at this, you can tell that some of these spheres of influence municipal service reviews are woefully out of date, 2007 being the last for a majority of the district. So we're just 18 years behind. I guess it'd be 13 when it was supposed to be. The "or as needed" part of the government code gives us a little bit of leeway. You know, some districts aren't going through a whole lot of change, so there's not a necessity to do an in-depth and detailed review every five years if you know that there's been little in the way of changes. But LAFCO should, at the very least, take a look at the sphere and say, yes, it's still consistent with the district and how it's operating. The most recent ones happened 10 years ago for those four districts on the bottom. So LAFCO has approved a work plan for the next five fiscal years. And that would be of highest priority are those in the red. They're the most imminent. So right now, we are wrapping up a wastewater municipal service review, and then will be the cities, the two cities, followed by into the next fiscal year, all water districts. Finally, the orange ones will be next, that's water districts, and then yellow is the fire protection district and healthcare district, and then the green would be the CSAs, the cemetery district, and the RCD. So that brings me to, why would special districts want to be on LAFCO? One, to gain a seat at the table. As I mentioned, there are quite a few decisions that relate to special districts, your boundaries, how you operate. Shouldn't you be a part of that discussion in those decision-making processes, right? Because if you're not at the table, then you're on the table. LAFCO can initiate certain changes, such as consolidations and dissolutions. So you have a commission without special district representation that could potentially be making a decision based on your long-term existence, you know? If LAFCO should determine that you're not operating at a standard that's appropriate to a public agency, it could dissolve you. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but what I'm saying is those options are out there, the potential is out there, so shouldn't special districts be part of that conversation and decision-making process? Special districts would have two votes on deliberations that greatly affect them. As I mentioned, all of those different things that LAFCO has jurisdiction over, and that would be equal participation to the cities and the county. And it would certainly build better working relationships with the cities and county as well. There are obviously benefits to LAFCO as well. Districts bring a perspective to LAFCO that's distinct from general government entities. It's probably more in line with the LAFCO law that special districts take part because of that aim or mission to ensure efficient service delivery, when so many special districts, that is what you do. And you would have insight and knowledge as to infrastructure that, say, the county might not have that perspective. Districts on LAFCO often, like I already mentioned, is more in tune with the spirit and intent of LAFCO law, but it also alters the dynamics between the county and the cities in LAFCO deliberations. So there'd be a more balanced perspective as opposed to just two perspectives. So the cost of being on LAFCO, I already mentioned, it would be 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 based on law. And that's based on the ratio of your revenues to that of all of the special districts in the county. So this is an updated spreadsheet from what we had previously, just based on more recent revenue information available from the state comptroller's office. And it shows that, you know, the total revenues for independent special districts in the county is $188 million, mostly thanks to the healthcare district. So the apportionment would be based on the revenues that are up there. So let's take a Romus Water District, 1.7 million divided by that 188 million would equal $791 for the year to be a member on LAFCO. So the obligations for each one of the districts is up there. The Pacheco Stormwater District, I think that there's more revenue there than what's shown, so as new fiscal years come to light, it would be updated, and the amount would be reapportioned based on new revenues. Sorry, any questions on that before I move forward? I know that that's one of the most talked about items or issues. I don't know. Is it? I don't hear you.
All right. All right, we'll try this one. Okay. Just to point out for those who are here, if you weren't here last time, so, you know, looking at this or how that, you know, the 1/3 budget, which is the 87,000 we apportioned among all of the districts, I don't see anybody here from the hospital, you know, district, but that was the, is there anybody here? No. That was the one kind of sticking point for, we talked about if the districts joined, you know, $70,000, I mean, considering they're trying to, you know, they're going through all their bankruptcy stuff and things like that, that was a challenge for them, you know, to be, well, we talked about voting on this, and it would be hard for them if most of the districts voted yes, and then they were, had to pay that. So, you know, they're, well, so in last time, our discussion was that, you know, before we essentially could move or really should move on this, it would really require all the districts to really come together and have a powwow on how we, you know, what are all the benefits that we could see? what are all the benefits that we could see from this and who would benefit the most? And whether or not we want to share those costs differently or even them out a little bit more because the way it sits right now or the, you know, the healthcare district having to pay the majority of that, you know, what is that benefit? And is that going to be something that they really need to engage in at this time? Is, I think it's really a valid question that was asked last time. So that's on the table. I just wanted to bring that up.
Right, good point. And I should also mention a couple of things with regard to these amounts. One is that if a majority of special districts vote to join Lafco, all districts would be on the hook for the amount apportioned to each of the districts. So it's an all or none scenario. So even if your particular district voted no, but a majority of other districts voted yes, then you would still be a part of Lafco and paying a portion of the budget. The other thing was that the membership on Lafco, I said, special districts would have two representatives on the commission. That is really based on a vote of the special districts. And if you were to come together and come up with an alternate funding amongst all of the districts, that would be okay by Lafco law. Each one of the districts would have to approve it. But also, given that, say, the healthcare district is footing such a substantial portion of the bill, should they have a one seat of those two voting members on Lafco? That once again would be up to the districts themselves to make that agreement. So, yeah, I would say that a meeting amongst the special districts would be a good idea to have that conversation.
It goes back along. I think you were contacted with what the, what is, the question was going to be, I'm not paying, now what are you going to do? What is Lafco going to do?
So the county auditor's office is the one responsible for collecting all of Lafco's apportionments. They're the ones that do the calculations, send out the bills, and would have to deal with whatever district chose not to pay at that time. So it wouldn't really go through Lafco and it wouldn't be determined by Lafco. That would be based on the auditor's office and what they would do.
Okay, so our portion at Sunny Slope would be $6,237. If somebody didn't pay their share, would the other districts be responsible to make up the difference?
No, that would, it would all go through the auditor's office. And I know that the auditor's office has means by which to kind of enforce payment of the budget. So that would be up to them to ensure that all districts make that payment. It's not really a scenario that I've ever heard of, of somebody refusing and then, I mean, to go from there, but no, no is the answer. There would be another alternative. Okay, any other questions about this as we move forward? Okay, so the process to be seated on Lafco has really already been started. Lafco voted at its June meeting to issue a letter of invitation to the districts. Included with that letter of invitation is a draft resolution. And that's essentially the voting ballot for each one of the districts. So each of your governing bodies should consider that resolution at a meeting, whether to approve or disapprove. And any approved resolutions are then returned to me. A, if there's no action taken, that's essentially a nay vote. So it's not just out of the ballots received, it's out of all ballots. So there are nine districts, so nine voting parties. So if I receive back five approved resolutions, then it's approved and special districts are on Lafco. Then Lafco gives notice and calls a meeting of the districts to select representation from there. And it consists of a presiding officer of each special district and may be conducted also in writing otherwise. But once we get to that point, I recommend that if there are other considerations such as alternative funding, such as the possibility of ensuring one of those seats has a particular district's name on it, that would be all conversations to have amongst the districts themselves and come to decision or agreement upon. Okay, I've been asked to remind of the timeline or deadlines that we're moving on. So the letter of invitation asked that those resolutions be returned by October 1st. So if you could get that on an agenda for consideration prior to that time, I've also offered to make myself available for those meetings. If you have any, if you or your board has any questions, and then I can certainly answer those, or I could do this presentation depending on what you need. So October 1st is the deadline. Following that, then we would like to hold elections within the next two months and have special districts seated by the beginning of the year. January 1 is the goal. And that will be a clean seating process then, starting from the next half of the fiscal year. So, any questions? I actually went through that a lot faster than I did last time.
Question. You said Lafco sets all the boundaries for the special districts? So they set Sunny Slope's boundaries? They set the hospital's boundaries? They don't set our boundaries? We don't represent the whole county?
Your county water district? For the county water district, yes, you-
Zone 3 bound, sorry. Yeah, so zone 6 and zone 3 boundaries are set by, yeah, other entities. So that, but you do your, you know, San Benito County Water District does represent the whole county. We only deliver water in those certain boundaries. But you do also have the ability to regulate outside, the entire county. Yeah, for where we go. But yeah, but when we talk about where we deliver our water from the San Luis Reservoir, there are only specific boundaries that we can give that water to. And that's outside of the control of any of us here. We'd have to do that through a federal change. Yeah.
Correct. Lafco does not have control over zones, subzones or zones of a district. That is true.
Jennifer, I think you should tell them how the two voting members are selected.
Sure, we can talk about that. So it really depends on the desires of the districts. But I, executive officer is responsible for calling the election amongst the special districts. It can be conducted in person or in writing. And the in-person meeting would, you would send a assigned voting delegate essentially to the meeting to make a vote. But prior to that, any district could offer up nominations of those that they would like to see filling the two regular seats. And then there would be the alternate seat to fill. So three seats in total. Clear?
So with the special districts, the, those that we can nominate up, do they have to be elected officials of the district to nominate up? Or could we, can we nominate anybody up? And then, like, let's just say, you know, somebody else that lives in our district, we're like, you know, they'd be a good representative. And we nominate them and then the districts go, oh, yeah, we think he'd be a good representative or she would be a good representative as well. And so we end up voting them on, but they're not an elected official. They would truly be an appointee that we, the districts, thought. Is that a possibility?
No. Yeah, it has to be one of the elected, so somebody from one of your boards. Okay, anybody else? Wow, we screamed through that. So like I mentioned, if you have meetings and would like me available, please let me know. I can be there in person or online. I can do the presentation or I can just answer questions. I can also make this presentation available to you if you would like to bring it back to your boards to kind of describe what we went over today. Also, this recording should be available online. So if any of your board members would like to watch it, I recommend that they do that. There's been a great effort by Lafco to make sure that we get the word out, not just to the special districts, but also to anybody interested in the public. We certainly want to make sure that this is a very open and transparent and well-publicized process. So, yes.
My curiosity question is, what possessed Lafco to want to do this in San Benito County? And who's pressing it?
I will, just one moment, just because I am executive officer of three other Lafcos in California. So on two of those Lafcos, there is also an effort moving forward to seat special districts. It's a common trend, like I showed on the map. Many Lafcos are doing it, so it's not just special to San Benito.
Well, the movement local, this is Supervisor Gonzalez here. The movement locally was, both Commissioner Salinas and I attended Lafco conference two years back. And we saw the huge proportion of other counties that were participating. And we figure if you are at the table helping us make these decisions, we can't get it wrong. And that's why we push for it. It wasn't something that was even embraced last year. But we are, we have been pushing it and trying to get it. Because again, there's five of us up there, sitting up there, two supervisors, two city council members, and then a private citizen. But we want you to be able to have a say in what's going to happen with your prospective districts. We don't know everything and you have, as, you know, her presentation shared, is you guys have a perspective of what the services are and how you're interacting with the community where we don't possess that. So we just thought it's a win-win. But if you guys don't want to do it and don't want to participate, it's your decision. And how you vote in your respective representative, the two that'll be seated at the board as well as the alternate, it's entirely up to you. We have no say. We can't even say, hey, Drew, can you put this person on the board? No, it's that body's decision of who's going to be on it. We can't press the scale one way or the other. Again, we're trying to be inclusive more than anything else. With looking forward to the future of San Benito County as to how it's been, to what we have a vision of what it's going to be, it is imperative, in my opinion, that all the districts have a seat at the table because only, only the water district in Sunny Slope or in Aromas or Trespinos, they're the ones that are seeing what's going on in that area. And when a subject comes to Lafco, now we, not only do we not know what's going on, we have to go do our homework to be able to make the right decision. The right decision can only be made by law and by policy. We just don't pull something out of the air and say, oh, we're going to allow you to do it. That doesn't happen. So if we have the folks at the table that have the knowledge of what's going on in their districts, they'll be able to be part of the conversation as it comes forward. And only you, as your own districts, know, for instance, San Benito County Water District, you're the one who knows how much water you have and how much water's coming in and how much water you're not going to have in five years based on what you're doing today. But the fact that what you're doing today is you're anticipating that you're going to have the water for us for five years from now. And those are the decisions and that's the information that needs to be known by Lafco when we are saying we're going to approve an annexation of a certain area or we are going to be able to say, okay, ABC Water District, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing based on it. And then we go forward with those MSRs. And then you, other districts, who know how something is supposed to be done, are able to give an input on that. I don't know how a water district is run. But if we had a district, we had a commissioner from one of the water districts and ABC Water District was not doing what they're supposed to be doing, the experience brought forward is invaluable.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we wrap this up?
Just trying to get examples. So at the moment, Trespinos has about enough water to put out a fire if it was built in a wheelbarrow. And Aromas has a complete no growth. So they don't, they don't want anybody to have any water. So 5% of the people make up 95% of the rules. Am I getting this right in thinking that if we have more districts, then 5% of the people won't be making up all the rules? Is that correct? That's how I am interpreting it, just from the public. Well, if that's the way it is, I'm for more districts.
So I don't know necessarily if we're promoting proliferation of new special districts, but at least supporting conversation amongst all of the special districts and being part of that decision-making process so that you're not making your decisions in a vacuum, right? Sorry, excuse the cough drop. So I guess the last thing I'll leave you with is, Aromas Water District has already voted and supported the resolution. So that leaves four more votes. But I will leave it up to you. Reach out to me if you have any questions. And once again, thank you so much for coming. Oh, yeah, one more.
What is stopping? I understand the city mayors or council members, supervisors, but in your conversations with people and these special districts, all of a sudden, you're putting the special district representatives in a political seat to make political decisions on development. That, you know, this is, it's a fact. I know you, what you guys were saying, that it's a nonpartisan type deal, but it's a political, it gets to be a political position where most of these special districts are not in an area where they're doing political decisions. People come to a water district, I don't care if they come to Sunny Slope- People come to a water district, I don't care if they come to Sunny Slope, they come to San Benito, they come to Fire District. Developers find out ahead of time if there's enough water and the services are available. And that's how these things are planned. All politics aside about what's gonna get developed or what's not gonna get developed. But now you're, you do these special districts, all of a sudden, these districts that have never been political before, all of a sudden are thrown right into the heat of the fire on annexations and all the rest of that stuff. And in your conversations with these special districts, has that come up? And any discussion about that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Although, I should note that LAFCO doesn't have land use authority at all. So, the issue of to develop or not to develop is not a LAFCO question. The only question that comes before LAFCO is, should this entity change its boundaries, annexation? And does the annexation meet the letter of the law and the policies adopted by LAFCO? So, it's not, should this development occur? It's, is it in the sphere of influence? Is it protecting agriculture? Is it, you know, each one of those items that I listed before that LAFCO has to comply with? So, LAFCO has no hand in promoting or approving a development. It is purely, should they be included or not included in a particular service provider's boundaries? That's those applications that come to LAFCO. Once again, all of those decisions are dependent on the general plans of those entities that are making those decisions. Those are the decisions that are up to the county and the cities. Yeah, we can go around and around, I'm sure. But in any case, the intent isn't to make it a political position for special districts. It's that they would have insight as to, hey, should this county water district be allowed to annex this property? Do they have the capacity to provide that service, that water service? Do they not have the capacity? This special district sitting on the commission might have insight and be able to help LAFCO make a more informed decision. So, it's not intended to be political, but I see what you're saying.
A good example is the sewer lines that are run from San Juan to Hollister to the city now. When I was out and about on that issue, individuals would say, "Oh, you're gonna see building follow that pipeline." And that's going right through Primagland. And our decisions are based on LAFCO code. And building goes on the, the general, the general plans. LAFCO doesn't have anything to do with that. So, the building is all based on the general plans of the cities and the county. So, in other words, LAFCO is basically just moving boundaries and protecting those boundaries.
I'll go off on that a little bit with regards to San Juan Batista hooking up to Hollister. Is there, you know, they're like, "Oh, you're gonna build more houses in San Juan Batista," blah, blah, blah. So, what they've done is regarding their sphere of influence. And instead of increasing their sphere of influence, they decreased their sphere of influence so as to go forward with not building anymore outside and making a larger sphere of influence, and they decided to decrease it. So, I mean, there will be development. We can't stop development, hopefully, especially commercial economic development, which is really needed in this county. But it's, it's, I can see where Mr. Tenasha is saying that is politicized because this issue of just having these meetings has been politicized, saying that LAFCO wants to control and build more housing. Well, we don't have anything to do with that. But there are people out there that have become, that have made it politicized, that politicized it in board of supervisors' meetings. And it had nothing to do with it. I mean, LAFCO went there and said, "Hey, we, this is what we would like to do." It was presented and they turned around and they said, "No, because we want to control growth." Well, so does LAFCO because LAFCO doesn't, has nothing to do with that. So, it, I can, I can agree that it has become politicized. But I think that actually, if it hadn't been myself and Supervisor Gonzalez and had it been somebody else that came up with the idea, it would not become politicized. There you go.
Anybody have any easy questions for me?
I know I should have caught this, but the members that will come with the districts, there would be examples, water board members, employees? Just like, like, what is his name? Seth is on Aromas Water Board, that type of official? Okay. And they're voted from that? Thank you.
The answer was yes, that it would be all the representatives, special district representatives would be chosen from, purely from the elected boards of each one of the special districts. So... So, the question is, why are school districts exempt? I don't know if I could go back 60 years, find out. But, but yeah, they've never been under LAFCO jurisdiction. I think it's just because the state still has more authority over that than, say, LAFCO. I don't really know. I'll say that. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And once again, contact me if you have any questions.